All right, well, welcome, DAC. Thank you for joining us for our pre, I don't know, start of the year meeting. And thanks for being here and thanks for doing all your work. I think you had a lot of extra meetings this summer, so that was awesome. So, thanks for doing that. Do you all want to lead? Or Rob, do you want to lead? Who wants to lead this?
I can set the context and then Ralph, if you want to take that over. So historically, and according to our bylaws, just in our operating agreements, we meet with the board once or twice a year to kind of topic, cover topics of joint concern ahead of time to make sure we can fit them into the DAC schedule and give them the attention that we need. And so that's really the objective of our meeting tonight is to see what topics the board would like us to study jointly and if there are topics that the DAC would like the board to consider studying or get a sense of if we're on the same page. And then that allows us to lay our calendar work ahead. So, things the board would like, some things the DAC would like to discuss this year. And that's just about it.
Perfect. And I just thought I'd add, I sent everyone the letter from the CDE that we'll be taking a pause on the UIP, which is kind of impactful. Have you, and I'll start there, have you thought about whether you'll be looking at anything? I don't know what you would look at, so.
We had conversations with Rob earlier this summer in some DAC exec meetings about sort of our worry on accountability, systems of accountability falling by the wayside in a year in which there's a lot of concerns around equity and how students are succeeding or falling behind in this environment. And that was a question we kind of, we addressed. And one of the things we came to was it's important for the DAC to maintain a regular cadence in, so future iterations of the DAC know that they need to be talking about something like the UIP four times a year. And if the CDE was going to waive that, could we still discuss and be involved in some of the other accountability measures, whether it be through the strategic plan, other things maybe we haven't decided, come up with yet? But that is a big concern of ours. Because we feel, and we'd like to get the sense of the board, that just because of CDEs and we're holding us accountable to the measures it has historically, it doesn't mean we shouldn't be holding ourselves accountable to some standards.
And the other element to this is, and Rob's spoken to this a couple of times, is that as we start to get the students back into the classroom, particularly for some of the lower grades, there's a goal to do some assessment and to get students and some of their early orientation aligned. And that was an area in which we thought we would have a role to play in terms of trying to at least do some overview of how were we getting and reaching the students that were vulnerable? And what were, in fact, some of the early results that we were getting with the assessment process? Whatever information is available, that information would certainly be useful.
And then can I ask a question? Are we going to conduct a climate survey this year, Rob? Or are we going to do a modified climate survey that would reflect the students' experience in the online environment?
You know, we can certainly think through how we would want to do that. I think most of the surveys that we have in regards to climate really pertain to the physical environment, you know, what's it like at school? We would have to rethink what a climate survey, or whatever type of end-of-year or mid-year survey we would want to do in the event that we're still in phase one or even in phase two, because we would say that those are significantly different than in-person five days. We could certainly think through that. And just to speak to Ralph's earlier point, you know, we're committed to sharing all of our information and being incredibly transparent with District Accountability Committee. We do have some assessments that we'll be doing from a diagnostic standpoint. I think that, you know, your typical measures that we would look at year over year will be, just that data's not going to be available without CMAS. And then also with the SAT and ACT, just the PSAT, there's the significant disruptions that were there. But also, we could turn to the strategic plan metrics in which we have data to look at. But I think that it's going to be more of an ongoing conversation to kind of talk through the data that we've collected and where we think the value is and what we can learn from that.
The other emphasis that dovetails with what Rob just shared is a major focus this year for DAC is parent engagement. So, we're looking at areas of where we can make inroads, particularly schools that either don't have fully functional SACS. And to that end, we put together a good bit of the, some training materials so that we can get some orientation. So, as students are either online, going back to school, that the SAC and the parents are, we're able to expand those. We were able to make some inroads at Alicia Sanchez, and we would like to build upon that and drive parent engagement on a broad basis.
So, on the parent engagement piece, how, so let's take that as an item for DAC this year that you're planning on doing. What is your current planned deliverable that comes back to the board? Is it going to be a set of recommendations? Is it going to be an analysis of parent engagement? What does that look like?
Well, certainly, one of the pieces that we need to do is, we built some pieces and data around SACS, and what we'd like to be able to do is report on what improvement, what inroads we have made. And in particular, in terms of the guidelines that are established for SACS, do we have the three areas that we focused on in the past that we, I know we'd like to make and deliver on is representation about the demographics of that school. Second is, do we have the correct membership? So, some of the schools either don't have the right membership as outlined by the CDE. And then, the other part of it was to have them active and meeting, because some of the schools didn't have SACS. So, those would be the three areas. Nicole, would you add anything to that list?
I think that's sort of what a lot of our conversation's around. I know we've presented to the board in the past about the number of schools that don't have SACS at all, and how that can hamper the accountability piece and just even the collaboration between the stakeholders within the smaller school community. And so, getting those off the ground would be something. Over the summer, IT department helped create SAC webpages, and so we can actually then, if they're posting minutes, those on all the school sites, it's something we can look into. Some of the basic operational functions is, I think, is what we were trying to start with as far as engagement.
Okay. So, and board members, is that okay with you? That's one of the items that DAC is going to be looking at this year?
Tina, I would like, Nicole, when you said operational functions, operational functions of the SACS, like they're, they're to provide, don't they provide input into some of the school operations at the local level, like making certain determinations and decisions along with the principal?
Yeah, so SACS, the easiest way to think about it is the SAC does almost all of the same functions as the DAC, except for at the school level. So, we're giving information, input on school budgets, giving information on the school, or updating, providing for the school UIP, parent engagement, fundraising, like, not the act of fundraising, but sort of the dollars allocations. So, it's that accountability piece for the school itself, and not all schools have those.
Right. That would be great. I would like to see something like that because, and really, how much is that school advisory committee really making those decisions as opposed to maybe rubber-stapping something that's already been developed for them? And the other piece is, the composition, I think, is critically important as it relates to how many parents are involved in the SAC, as opposed to, say, teachers and the principal. So, yeah, I would love to see that.
And I would add, it would be nice if you kind of included what SAC's role is. So, just, you know, making it clear that SACS usually don't pick out instructional materials, but they do look at whether there's been growth in math, regardless of how it's measured or, and again, like DAC, it's recommending, it's an advisory board at the end of the day, but to understand how those, how that feedback is consistently given back to the principal, I think would be helpful.
So, you're hitting on what I would call the basics. So, there's three areas that, over the last year, that Nicole has been kind of focused on, so that we could try and bring, get kind of a minimum level of operational performance that we knew was, in fact, attended at all of the schools. So, that was representation. Did they have their basic, what we would call their basic activities in compliance, so that they're having the meetings regularly held? There's some publication of those meetings, some record of the meeting, and that they're engaged with the principal? And that there's a uniform understanding about what the SACS do. So, we haven't always had that level of understanding, common understanding. So, we're trying to get to a common framework so that we can say to the board and to ourselves internally, as an organization that's accountable to itself, we now have this level of performance on the SACS, and we know which SACS are meeting and which are not, because we haven't been there on that accord. And I think, Richard, a point that you had made is that we'd also like to understand that the representation of the parents is representation of the demographics at the school. And we just achieved that for the first time at Alicia Sanchez. And some of the things that we learned about getting there, so we now have five Latino and Latina parents that are attending SAC. And so, for the first time, we need translation services. Fortunately, we have those embedded within the school, so that's working out. And we're trying to build, if you will, a framework that goes on, how do SAC parents know what they're supposed to do? How do SAC parents report on what they're doing? So that we all, we all have a common level of understanding and a common language, because we haven't had that. So, that's kind of where we're trying to get to this year.
I think that sounds great, if everyone's good and will get, and when do you think you would report back to the board on that?
Well, certainly before this year, this calendar year is out, that's for sure.
It doesn't really matter, but.
Well, we'd like, we'd like to, we'd like to, we'd like to know sooner rather than later, to be perfectly honest. And so.
Depends on the cadence of the year. So, a couple of things, looking ahead, I noticed that Kathleen had shared the policy calendar and open enrollment, student home, anything tied to enrollment is on the policy calendar tentatively for October. And so, question there, last year, you guys had asked when that was going to be coming up, DAC to provide some input on that. Should we expect DAC to weigh in on this issue this year? I know it's a hot one.
I personally think you should. Board members, what do you think? I can see all of you, so you can raise your hand. Okay. And I think that's JCC and JCCR, is that the?
There's like five of them, yeah.
I think, I think that's going to need a lot of community engagement, is my guess. If someone's going to, I don't know if anyone's going to change anything, but it would be certainly of interest.
You know, we won't have time. We can certainly review that in October or, you know, when it makes sense. We won't have time, I do not believe, to implement any changes for the 2122 calendar year. Because Tina, to your point, I think it's going to, anytime you talk about enrollment, open enrollment, that's going to be, that's going to take some deep conversations with our community. And just depending on where we are with the pandemic, I think we'll, that could potentially limit our ability to do that.
What else was on the policy calendar that Nicole, that you thought might come to DAC?
That was the only one. We're working on the SRO stuff, which isn't necessarily policy-related, but that was something else. And she only had the calendar available through the end of this calendar year, so I wasn't sure what she's thinking is going to happen in the spring that we might or might not need to weigh in on.
I would imagine there'll be one or two other things, so that we can expect those to come up.
Any hints?
No.
Come on!
I felt like she mentioned something I literally forgot, and I forgot to ask her today. Sorry.
You know, there's another arm of this too, that we've always included with DAC that's been important, and that's the equity slice, which certainly brought us in with the SRO work that we're doing. And so, that's another, that's another dimension to this. While we're bringing up the Equity Council and those pieces are going, is to be able to have at least some, some understanding of how we are, or you are, or getting a handle around accountability for our equity piece. Now, traditionally, we've done that around the UIP and the CMAS and those pieces, but there are some other elements.
And when is your date to give feedback on the SRO? Is that in September?
Jorge, you can jump in if you want, since you've been so quiet.
Yes, hi.
Since he's leading it.
Right. We're holding our first meeting this week, and we'll be meeting through September, since we just got the materials about a week and a half ago. So, I think that we're scheduled to report back to you in readiness for the October meeting.
Okay. And is that a subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay. How many people are on it?
Right now, we've got seven on the subcommittee, but we've invited members of Cable to participate in the committee, in some committee as well.
Okay.
And so, we expect that committee will grow a little bit. And we'll do a little bit more outreach as well to make sure that we've got participation from DAC representatives from the high schools and middle schools with SROs are actually placed as well.
Okay.
And I have a question for the board on that one. So, originally, our timeline was driven by the first board meeting, which the board wanted to make a decision by October. Now, with the Equity Council's work overlapping this, do you see that timeline shifting on our end? Or do you still feel like that's a timeline we need to adhere to?
Rob, do you have input from CI?
Yes, no, we're committing to, still to that October 20th recommendation to the board in regards to where we're at. So, we're still on track.
Okay.
And so, Jorge's got a calendar that he's working with the subcommittee, so he can bring their recommendation back to the DAC. DAC can vote on it, and then we can get a formal recommendation from the large, DAC at large to the board by October.
And then what else does DAC have tentatively scheduled? Do you have anything else?
Well, the other thing that we have going, that we usually do, that starts out like a footrace, is the Budget Committee.
Oh, right, yes.
And so, we had conversation with Rob about this earlier, and the desire was to keep that in place, and so the Budget Committee is going to get started off here pretty quick.
Okay. Back to accountability, can, Rob and DAC, can you guys work out, can you, people work out on ways that we can share engagement information as well as academic or achievement information, maybe not at a school level, but just understanding how things are going in this unique environment we're in?
We can. I guess what we'll have to think about is, to the extent that the diagnostic information will be useful, I mean, I think that's useful information in regards to setting priorities, equity, and fulfilling budgets, to the extent we can roll that up to give some useful, meaningful reports. I think we can, we can absolutely do that. And then just, you know, we're without a year's worth of data, so comparison data will be difficult, and so it'll just be looking at what we have and kind of making recommendations based on that. But happy to work with Nicole and Ralph and the executive team at DAC to try to think about what would be the things that would be interesting, that would help us make different decisions, or to understand to the extent that we're doing a good job or need to improve, what those measures might look like in a pandemic year. But we can certainly have those conversations.
And I wonder, board members, if there are pieces of accountability that you would like us to consider? Hearing from parents, there's a great deal of concern of the extent to which the teacher's going to be held accountable for providing meaningful learning experiences online, since there was a lack of that last year, and what students received was all over the place. So, that's something we're hearing, I'm hearing a lot from parents, is how do we know, how can we know? Or what are the systems to kind of go through when it doesn't feel like this online learning environment is successful? Or, that's a tricky one, but that's a question, like, how do we hold teachers accountable for delivering a product online? So, that's a question coming from parents, but I was wondering what's coming from the board.
Yeah, and I think that is sort of where I was heading with surveys, sort of like the climate survey, you know, is this, is what you're doing online worthwhile? Is it engaging? Is it meeting our goals? I don't know who you asked that. And I also, I mean, surveys can be tricky. They can go either way, and they have to be done very well. So, I mean, I think that's a fair question. Rob, do you have some thoughts about that? And other board members, do you want to weigh in on this idea of like how we measure the experience and teacher accountability? Donna?
I have a question.
I spoke.
Go Donna first, and then Richard.
Sorry. I spoke with someone yesterday on the phone. I think she's going to be one of the speakers tonight, because I said I didn't really have the answers for her, but I think a lot of parents are comparing their schools with each other. And I know we have a lot of autonomy between the schools, but she, her kindergarten, she put in a private school, her third grader, she, she said she got information from the teacher and that this kiddo's only going to get 30 minutes a day. And she said she talked to other people within the district and other schools. I think parents are really going to be comparing what each is getting. And to Nicole's point, I think it's important to have some bit of accountability among what students are getting, and how can we figure that out? That might relate to what you're talking about. I don't, I wouldn't look at it necessarily as a climate survey, but parents are going to compare. So, that's, and the inequities involved in one student getting a lot more individual online, not individual, but online attention and class instruction versus another student getting 30 minutes per day. That's it.
Richard, you had a comment?
Couple of, a couple of comments. One is, prior to the reorganization, wasn't the district looking at trying to come up with some common, common assessments that, that didn't take the place of the state assessment, but it was something that we were doing district-wide? Where are we with that? And are we still working on that? Or has that been scrapped? And then the other comment is, how would the teacher evaluations pertain to that accountability piece that Nicole's talking about? And are we still going to do teacher evaluations based on teacher effectiveness?
So, a couple of things. First of all, with the Common Assessment Project, I know that there was a couple of subjects that the district had been working on. The issue with the Common Assessments is that teachers weren't teaching the same standards. And so, as we think about the work that we've done over the summer for, within the strategic plan, 1A, 1B, we have aligned those standards and unit templates. Donna, the person that you're speaking to, I think that when we hear stories like that, we need to forward those to area superintendents who are working with principals to make sure that there's consistency in scheduling in regards to structural minutes, access to teachers, student engagement. And we're trying to do a very good job in regards to standardizing that. And so, if there was a survey that we would want to do, it would, I would suggest that we would look at the standard and expectation that we're setting and use that as the litmus test, as opposed to, do you think you're getting enough or not enough online instruction or engagement? I think we should be measuring to the standard that we've developed in consultation with our team and with our community. I think that that would be an important piece. And I also think it's a slippery slope. I think that you could, we could have the world's best online program, and parents wouldn't be okay, because we're online and not in person. And so, I think that that's just a piece that we're going to have to try to navigate. I will say that in regards to assessment, we, teacher evaluation, we are moving forward with teacher evaluations. I know Migrados had some conversations around that today, on how we're going to do that, and how do principals, assistant principals, evaluators evaluate a teacher while they're teaching online? And there's ways that you can do that. And so, we are going to have teacher evaluations this year. And with the Common Assessment piece, Richard, I think that now that we have purchased Illuminate, which is the software platform, we're using diagnostic assessments, we are in a much better place to begin to start to set up common formative assessments. To the extent that we set up a testing system and schedule, I don't know that we're there yet, but we've standards, we've aligned the standards, and we've purchased the tool, and we're going to be doing diagnostic assessments. So, out of the gate, we'll know, we'll have a better sense of where kids are, whether they're above grade level, below grade level, standards they may have missed the previous year.
Rob, is there a standard on exactly how much time a parent can expect that a student will get that instructional piece this year?
Yeah, yes, schools have been communicating that to parents individually, so if you have, if you have a parent who feels like that hasn't been communicated, or what they've been told by teachers out of line with the school's expectation or the district's expectation, you could send that to us. We'll work with the principal to make sure that those things are answered correctly and that, and that we're working for it. And we're, you know, we're developing supports as well for teachers who, as we get into online learning, if they're struggling, we're developing supports as well. But it's going to just take a lot of engagement. Again, if parents feel as if that their kid isn't getting what we've, what we've shared as the expectation, they've got to let us know, so that way can we do something about it.
Yeah, my comment to her was to let you and the principal know and show that email of the 30-minute piece, rather than, because it probably is something that should be solved before school starts.
Well, absolutely. We want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Again, we've worked really hard to make sure that that happens. And so, now that we've had the structures and we've built that, the schedules in a way to maximize student engagement, you know, if there are areas where that's not happening, we need to know, so we can work with schools to make sure that that does happen.
So, board members, would it be fair to say that we're, so my guess is we're all interested to find out how things are going. We're not 100% clear how that's going to happen. Are we good with having Rob work with DAC to think about that and kind of be working with him? Or do we want to work directly with Rob, or just do a combination? The reason I bring up DAC in this case is that they are the Accountability Committee, and usually they're the first place that looks at the Unified Improvement Plan and also the Climate Survey and whatever else they're looking at. So, I'm just wondering if we can ask DAC to lead that and then come back to us if everyone feels okay with that? Is everyone okay with that? Okay, yes, Lisa, yes, Richard?
So, I'd like to put a caveat with that, Tina. So, as we look at online, there are two things that I think are really front and center for me. One is, the data that we collect, I think, needs to be actionable. So, it needs to be relevant, and back to Rob's point, if they've got a way to collect stuff, you know, and we can go through that kind of information and, you know, reach some conclusions, that's great. I think the other part of this is sooner rather than later is really important. If the 2.5 committee is successful, you know, we could have teachers that are moving from online to in-class in the next six weeks. And so, how do, how do we collect information, make it timely, and then helpful and constructive in the way that Rob and his organization and the board could use it? So, those would be my only, only couple of concerns there. So, if we're going to do this, Nicole, I think we'd want to frame this so that we could get to this rather quickly and be able to work with Rob's team, so that we could, we could actually have something to report sooner rather than later. So, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I just appreciate that we don't have a lot to work with right now, but we also need to know what's going on. So, you know, Rob, what do you think would be the best course that would work for staff?
Well, I think that, you know, to Ralph's point, number one, we are anticipating some exciting plans coming forward from the working advisory group that we've developed. We were able to sit in on a meeting today and heard some of the, some of the ideas. I think that it's going to be a combination of some of those ideas together. They're going to help us get back in front, get kids back in person. So, I just think that we'll just have to be. So I just think that we'll just have to be, to know the limitations of what the survey can and can't tell us, right? Like, so if we want to be specific on how did we do with online instruction, we just have to be explicit around that. If it's, you know, how did whatever version of in-person learning work, we need to be explicit on that. And I would say that if we can compare what's happening to what we've expected to happen, the difference, right? If there's a difference in that will be, will be what will be able to inform us, especially if you pull that data school by school. So if you, you have five schools in the district that for whatever reason have not met parent expectations, that's very actionable, right? But if we do surveys on how did you feel about online learning? Again, we could do an excellent job in online learning. And if folks don't like online learning period, right? Then that, those, that data is going to skew whether or not we did it well. So I just think that that's the slippery slope. But we can get Jonathan engaged with, with DAC leadership and we can certainly think through what that might look, look like. My recommendation would be to do something towards maybe the end of first semester, depending upon where we are to give us some actionable data as we move into second semester. But I think you're going to have to give this some time to see how things are going. You know, we could get off to a great start and things could start to tail off. We'd want to have a, a long enough period of, of time to be able to evaluate would be my suggestion.
Board members, are you okay with that? Okay, DAC, does that sound okay?
I think that sounds okay. I actually have a question. It's been on my mind for a while. School districts across the state and across the country have taken like stances or like put forth strong opinions on what's happening at their local district level with regard to opening or not opening. And, and I wonder, you know, our school board hasn't taken a, a position on that other than we're going to follow the plan, whatever the district says. Thinking about that and some of the work of the Phase Two Plus and where that may or may not go. I, I wonder, I just am curious if you as a board, where, where you want to put yours rubber stamp this year? And where you're prioritizing your efforts generally thinking also, I'm also thinking about this sort of budget cliff that we're going to be approaching with the Exodus and how this is looking. You guys are really great at saying yes, yes, good ideas, good ideas. Do you have a stance on like really focusing and being tight on like, these are our top five? This needs to be happening. I'm willing to like hold people accountable, whether it's Rob or the union or whomever to make these like things that we value, that you value as a collective happen. I'm just, it's something that's been on my mind.
Yeah, I mean, basically we, we signed off on the strategic plan and on the initiatives that were prioritized. And we added a couple of initiatives when we did that. So we have something like six initiatives right now, I think, Rob. And is that right in the prioritization?
So we have 13 initiatives in total. We started off with six last year. We're going to be starting, I think, another five this year.
So, and those have been our priorities and that's how we've been doing a lot of our budgeting. So that plan is our rubber stamp in terms of that. I think the question for us this year, and I'm speaking for myself at this point, is what can we afford? And then what are we going to have to deal with if, you know, in two years we don't get back some of the 500 students that have left? And what are some of the implications of that? You know, so I think that's, and it's a little trickier because without the UIP data, without the assessment data, we're not in a great place to look at the academic achievement part. And even some of the three opportunity metrics that we were looking at are a little trickier in this environment. So it puts them on a slight pause. And in terms of reopening, we decided to approve a plan of five possibilities, knowing that we could say we want to go live tomorrow, but we can't figure it out. So, and if there's a, if the public health says we can't do it, it's kind of silly to say, well, we're going to do it anyway. So I don't personally, I would not go down that route. So we, we've decided to go with the flow based on the conditions surrounding us. Does that help?
Yeah, and I just worry that if we don't get back to in-person learning, particularly on my side of the district, people are fleeing for any school that will take their kids in person right now.
Yeah.
Anyone. I joke like atheists are going to Sacred Heart because they are open in person. And so I worry that the longer that that continues, the more families are going to choose to leave. And that's just going to make all of these things that we have going on harder to accomplish. And then I wonder in talking about, you know, where do we want to prioritize? Where does the board want to prioritize its effort? If we can't do six things, the district can't do six things. Are, are, are you having conversations about these are our top three? Or do you need to have support around that? Or do you, are you just hoping that maybe this never comes to head and we can just keep on keeping on? I just, my concerns are mounting.
I'm ready to start cutting initiatives. And I don't think we have a reason to do that yet. You know, if anything, we, we do keep adding, we added the SROs. We feel like we added something else and it's, it's escaping me. And I think Rob is extremely aware of the lack of in-person learning. I mean, is that correct, Rob? I don't.
Let me be a hundred percent clear. I will do everything I can to get kids back in person. I understand the issue you're talking about. And then the other issue we're not talking about, which is the, the achievement gap and then the inequities that occur for, for the, for the haves and have-nots in our community, for, for parents who are able to, to provide those resources and for those that are counting on us. And, and I would tell you every morning I wake up with that burning. I will say that the working group is, is wrestling with, with a bunch of differing ideas and will provide recommendations to us. I think that, that some of these ideas are ideas we've thought of, some of them are not. But when you have the logistical challenges that we're faced with, and again, I'll take the position that if you have somebody who's, who's at high risk medically, we shouldn't be putting them in front of kids. We shouldn't have them make that choice. I think the right thing to do was to tell them, apply for a medical exemption. And we believe that, that they did that well. But that's still, we still have most, the, the large majority of our teachers that, that will be able to, to deploy in the event that we're, the, the data stays where it is and continues to decline. And so, you know, my, my hope is that by, by September, we have our plan. By the end of September, we have our plan on what we need to do. Unfortunately, Nicole, the reality is for some parents, that's too late. If we weren't able to open the first day of school, then they've made those decisions and choices. We do feel like that, that, that number of folks that are withdrawing is slowing down. We did see an initial push. We'll, we'll give an enrollment tonight, update tonight, board members, so you can kind of see where we're at and ask all the questions you may, you may have. And then, you know, I think that this is something that we're going to have to prepare for anyways because we are, we are projected to have declining enrollment for, for the next five years. We just saw some acceleration. So it's, we're going to do everything we can to get kids back in person as long as it's safe. And we'll work with the working group, but we're also going to work with our team to make sure that, you know, whatever ideas they, that they come up with, it may be that we take pieces of their ideas together and move forward with the plan.
Kitty?
And, you know, for Nicole's question, I think one of the issues is, is that since we have this framework in place with the strategic plan and then with the five phase, people aren't hearing what we've decided because they didn't have a good reason to pay close attention to what the board was doing earlier. And so they're probably thinking, what's the board going to do? What are they going to do? They haven't heard. And it's perfectly reasonable that most people are not paying close attention to everything that we do. So I don't know if, you know, going back and looking at board notes or something would be helpful to people to see what has already been discussed, what, you know, what we've talked about. I know Tina has mentioned more than once that we are not going to be taking a vote on whether or not we're starting school because we have all, I mean, starting in-person school because we've already taken that vote. And we're going by the decisions that are made at the district and the health department and doing everything we can to get kids back in school. But I also think there is, at least from what I've heard, people don't necessarily think we're being sincere with this getting back to school. Cause I've heard, you know, we've seen all the emails, people saying like, yes, we're assuming that this is just going to be for the year, even though they said they're going to do something. So, and that's difficult. And I, I completely understand parents being so concerned and so afraid because we're in a situation we have never, ever been in before. But, and I don't know if that's helpful at all, but that's just sort of my observation on, on what I see going on and to Nicole's question.
Some other comments, board members or DAC members? Stacy?
I also think it's important to note that there are still a large population of families who do not want to go back in person. So I just want to acknowledge that as well. There are some who want to go back at all costs, but there are others who do not. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Okay, so, and that was a great question, Nicole. I, I just prompted me one thing though. We've talked about developing a process for school closure. And do we need to accelerate that process? Because that would be something DAC could get engaged with.
And that was kind of what it, it's like you just keep pulling this thread and it takes you a lot of different places. And that comes down to some of the budget questions or this open enrollment question. And I've mentioned to Rob that right now it's an interesting time. I mean, there's lots of opportunities to reimagine the system. And those opportunities are pretty amazing if we're, if we can act on them in a way, in an, in an order that is really beneficial in advancing equity to, to academic experiences, educational experiences for all of our students. And so that isn't, you know, that, that would be part of it, you know? Where's, where are those resources going? Where are kids going to school? There's so many things that are related and are coming up right now. Because I, I think that there's been frustration with the district for a long time for people that have not, people have not feeling very well served. And that, we might be tipping to the point where the haves and the have-nots feel equally not, not, not well-served, that they might be willing to, to think a little bit more radically to make a system that's better for everybody.
So I, I think in, in line with what Nicole and Rob have said, I, I've got, I'd like to put a bow around that, that measurement, the accountability piece that we talked about with online. Meaning that very specifically, Rob, we'll, we'll get together with your team. We'll figure out what's achievable. And we should send word to the board, here's what we can do and here's when we'll have it done. So with regard to either some measurement qualitative or quantitative on online and what we can do there, we'll get back to everybody. And Rob, we can meet with your team and, and, and make sure that we can bite off a chunk that's actionable in, in regard to the online piece. And I think to Nicole's point is that as this 2.5 work finishes off, there, there's a slant that's beginning to emerge. And that, that slant looks a little bit like this. And it's, you know, there's nothing conclusive, nobody's reached any conclusion, that, that there's more and more discussion about how do we get and accelerate the return to the classroom with those students that need it most. And, and I think, and, and as soon as that work is done, it may be that DAC could weigh in on, on either part of or a portion of that after that gets formally processed through Rob's team. And, and on the slant that it works with equity. So we might find to Nicole's point, there's some very creative solutions that really do a lot for this district. Because the fact of the matter is, I think, underlying this, and Ari, Ari and I had a brief conversation. In five weeks, they made more headway on, on crushing the digital divide than they have, than we have made in five years. So, so there are some pieces that we can build upon. I think there are some, some pieces, Nicole, that you and I are starting to hear that, that Rob, we could take back to your team. Be it online, be it some of the equity things with how, how do we get those kids in class? You know, it may be a role that we can do there. So those are the, those are the two pieces that I think we can do.
So I think we're good with the accountability piece. On weighing in on 2.5, I feel like DAC has representation on the 2.5 committee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then I don't know if it makes sense to then take the whole thing back to DAC?
We, we wouldn't do, we wouldn't suggest doing that.
Okay, got it.
I, I would just say that, that in the work that we do around equity, if we see and learn of something that came, came up with 2.5 that, that independent of that, we could see another venue or suggestion that Nicole was talking about being creative, we, we could, we could surface that up when we get back together at the end of this year.
And then Rob, do you think we need to accelerate the school closure process? This, this has been something that we've talked about having to do for a couple of years, just because we have declining enrollment. And it's, I mean, it's kind of a rough year to talk about that.
You're not talking about school closures for COVID. You're talking about closing schools due to low enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to take our time with that conversation. I mean, I don't think that that's something you can accelerate. Certainly we've been thinking about, you know, what would be options for the, for, for the board, our governor's team? What would the options be if enrollment continues to decline? With school closures being one of, I think, a, an array of potential options. But I would, I would highly suggest that, that we take our time with, if things get that severe, right? You know, at this point, we're thinking, you know, right now we had projected 200 kids below the previous year. We've added an additional 500 kids. I don't think that that's the trigger point to start to open up a, a, a wider conversation on that. I just think that we have to also just, just be mindful of the bandwidth, right? Like we've taken on some pretty significant work over the course of this, these first few months, in addition to the Equity Council development, SROs, all the equity work, the Phase Two Strategic Initiatives, Phase 2.5 for, for reopening. I think that the time to maybe discuss that Tina would be toward the end of this calendar year to see if that's something we wanted to put on the annual plan between January and, and May of next year on beginning to have those conversations on what that might look like, but, might look like. But we do have some initial thoughts and thinking around that, so we won't be starting from scratch. So I think that's good news.
Right, I mean, to Nicole's point, we are probably going to have some serious budget issues. And there are lots of options to solve those issues. But we have this other kind of underlying issue that we know exists for several years. You know, that's not new around enrollment. Donna? You're on mute, Donna. You're still on mute.
I, I know, someone put me on mute, not me. I just, it's all quiet here, so I just don't go back and forth. Anyway, Nicole, have you seen the decline in DAC and the SACS because of this? Or is there an increased interest? That, that was just my question on, in general.
You know, we were lucky at the end of last year to have like two thirds of our members wanting to recommit to DAC. And we touched base again with those members, knowing that people were opting out of the district. And that's held pretty well. We have our schools that we really struggle getting members and representation from. They are still challenging. On the bright side, we have a representative from BU for the first time, I think, ever. So that's a positive. So no, not on the DACs, but that is it. And the question I have for SACS. And on the DAC, we get people that really believe in public education. And so those are the people that are going to stick with this district and really hope they do what's right in the end. And they believe in that. But we'll see what happens at the school level, once those school accountability committees start to meet again.
Thanks.
Actually, go ahead.
No, I just said thanks.
Nicole, did you have something else to add?
I have a question. This has kind of been on my mind lately also. Last year, one of the topics for policy that a board member had added to your guys' list was school fundraising. And that's never a popular conversation. And it is interesting, given the current situation. I know one of my school principals reached out telling parents, we're for sure going to still do our fundraising campaign this year. And it was a head scratch because it wasn't for me personally, because I was like, I don't know what we're fundraising for. And I've had families ask me who, where to go to help financially, families that have greater needs right now. And I keep pushing them to impact on education. And I wonder if it's an opportunity or if it's the wrong time to kind of think about how, how fundraising happens at a local and a broad level and the impacts of that on equity in this time where we're shifting towards being on a tighter ship more so than ever. And, and having to think about resources in a different way than we ever have before. So I was just wondering if that is a topic that's still on the board, whoever, whatever board member put that forward? Or if it's something that's worth consideration, given the heavy lift that IMPACT has been doing this year?
Yeah, I mean, I think IMPACT has gotten a lot more aggressive about fundraising this year, so they had a pretty successful fundraiser. And I think that's the right answer for people who, for kids who are financially disadvantaged to donate to IMPACT because they can redistribute that based on need and they're pretty tied in with the district. Rob, do you have anything else about that? You talk to Allison more than I do.
No, IMPACT, they've been great partners, certainly for, for those who wanted to donate funds to help support, help support student help support students in need, that would be the right place. But to Nicole's other point, this idea of our policies around allowing schools to fundraise and then using some of those dollars to actually fundraise for people, I think that that has to be included as we think about our needs-based allocation system. Because our, our allocation system, what is what is driving people to have to fundraise for more people? And that's, I think, the issue that's at hand. And so I do think that that's tied into that strategic initiative that we hope to kick off this year. And, and it's part of that conversation.
Kathy, did you have your hand up? Okay, so I would like to wrap this up. What I see in the first semester, since we're now talking about semesters, is that we'll be hearing back from DAC on the SROs, on some thoughts around an alternative way to think about accountability in this condition, on policy JACC, JACC R, that may or may not happen this semester. I can't quite tell. And then finally, the SACS, parent engagement within the SAC context. And if that can, and then also the launching of your budget committee. If that sounds like a good runway until maybe we meet again in January, possibly December, depending on how things go, does that seem like a good plan for now with everybody? DAC, is that good with you?
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot. And I would just ask that the more, there's, we're, everything is sort of in flux right now. So the more, if you guys notice that you're pivoting in a direction, just keep us in the loop. I know Rob does a good, a job of that from the district perspective. But if you're like, oh, I know we're not going to touch that, like, we decided we don't have the capacity for tackling this issue, we're going to punt that. Let us know sooner rather than later so we can be nimble with our scheduling as well.
I'm still recovering from the pivot from Phase 3 to 1, so I don't know. Kind of get our energy back.
No kidding. So Tina, this lines up well with the plans that, that Nicole and I and the exec team kind of set forth with the subcommittees that we were going to have. So I think with the work that we did over the summer, we can get to this and, and appreciate the time.
All right. So with that, I'd love to adjourn it. So we have a few minutes just to stand up before we start the next meeting. Thank you so much, DAC, for being here and for all the work you're committing to do.
Thank you.